Ladies and gentlemen, I call to order the December 10th meeting of the Smithfield Planning Commission. If you all would rise and join me for pledge allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item in business is the chairman and director's report.
Yes, thank you. Good evening. Just a reminder that the entrance corridor overlay guidelines will be before town council as a public hearing on January 7th. Additionally, we will be approaching the BHAR about changing their term limits. This would be from five years to four years. According to the planning commission bylaws, they do require a rep from town council as well as BHAR, and their term is reflective back on to their council and BHAR terms. Therefore, right now, one of the planning commissioners would be serving a five-year term as opposed to the four-year term. This would align council terms, BHAR terms, and planning commission terms into the four years. And finally, I just wanted to thank Mr. Pack for serving on the planning commission as this will be his last meeting.
Kudos. Thank you.
Thank you, Rainie.
Thank you, Rainie.
Sorry, we didn't plan a party or anything.
That's okay. That's all right.
We'll just come on down. Next item, upcoming meetings and activities. Monday, December 16th, 3:00 PM, town council committee meetings. Tuesday, December 17th, we have that pesky BHAR meeting at 6:30. Tuesday, December 17th, we also have quarter of zoning appeals, but that's been canceled. Don't pencil that in. Tuesday, January 7th, town council meeting. Tuesday, January 14th, we're back here for planning commission meeting. Next item is public comments. Public is invited to speak to the planning commission on any matters except scheduled public hearings. Do we have anybody signed up? Nobody? And we have all these lovely folks here with us. Anybody change your minds? You want to speak anyway? All right. Now's your chance. Okay. Next item is planning commission comments. I know one planning commissioner wants to say something. Tom has a great idea, and I won't steal his thunder, but I will let him open the comment section.
What idea is that? Because I think I have two issues tonight then. What's the one you have?
The one we talked about when I was in CU the other week, about a joint session.
Oh. I was just suggesting to her that we, since council's changing and what they proposed, how they wish to approach development, I think we should have a joint meeting with them for them to outline how they see their commission working towards their goals.
I think it's a great idea.
So I think we should think about doing a joint meeting so they can help us understand how they want us to approach special use permits, density, all those discussions that they weren't happy with and ran on their platform.
I see a couple of council members in the audience, and you can go like this or like this, and see, we have some support for that anyway. Okay. Tammy, if you can help us make that happen, that would be great. Any other comments from council members?
Yeah, I have a couple of comments.
While you have a vote, while you're on the floor, Doc?
Yeah, so...I guess I'm going to apologize in advance because I'm a little irritated about this. So I want to discuss things in general as it ties to development developers, proffers, what's being done, what's not being done, but more specifically, the roundabout at Nike Park and Battery Park and what was changed on the third about VDOT intervening, saying that they didn't think they had the traffic flow for a two-lane roundabout that we negotiated in the subdivision of Mallory Point because they didn't think they had the traffic. And now it's been reduced to a single-lane roundabout, and I think that's a done deal because the town council voted on it last week. But my beef with that is, is we worked very hard with Mallory Point to construct that development from what it started to what it ended, down from 1,200 homes to 812 homes with concessions on the RPA, things of that nature. But a peak heist of that negotiation was the roundabout, of having the developer pay for a roundabout that's going to be needed in the future. VDOT doesn't plan ahead. We've got that. They may not have the traffic now to support it, but we are going to have to support it, and the developer should have put that in at his cost, not at our cost, not at the taxpayer's cost, because the way it was approved was by others, and we all know who others are, which is the government, which is, i.e., the town and the county. We're already hearing rumors about Turner Drive. I don't know all the details about that, and that's a $7 million project. I mean, what is this going to cost in the future, eight years from now? This, this I find to be absolutely ridiculous if this was approved, when this was what makes a development that may not be perfect, but now it makes it even less perfect. And this is, I mean, this is, this is part of the negotiation with the developer to say, "This is what you're contributing to this. This is what you're giving to the town in exchange for extra homes that everybody's upset about." But yet, we just gave it to them. We just turned it right over to them. And I think that's horrible that they were able to change that proffer. But I'm also, even though I know I have no authority other than to make recommendations to the town council, that should have come back to the planning commission for discussion item before the town council acted on it, so that we can at least offer an opinion about the negotiations of this. I think it sets a huge bad precedent for what's going on. The developers can come in here and list out a whole bunch of proffers and then say, "Oh, well, they're not going to follow through on that." Well, we can change that. They're going to do that. And I think we're not following through with that. There's an agenda item on tonight that we got to discuss about what we're doing, what we're not doing. We've got an issue with Cypress Creek, the things that have been proffered, that have been offered. They're in the proffer statement that aren't being done. And then...there was one other third issue. Yeah, that was it. Roundabout Cypress Creek, and then the Red Point Tap House issue with their water. Those are the three issues on proffers and things that should have been done. But we're not following through with these things that say they're supposed to be done. I know I've asked this question multiple times, but when we're given a conceptual plan of a development, one's going to come before us tonight, or somewhat of a conceptual plan, at least a discussion item, is this a legal document? We're using this conceptual plan to make a judgment about development. Mallory Point being a good example, because we've been given all of these documents. You can even apply it to the Grange. We've been given a conceptual plan. That's what we base our decisions off of, and then I'm assuming town council bases their decision off of that, because we don't have engineered drawings. We don't have final stuff. But yet, the conceptual plan and what's coming through is changing when I'm not sure it needs to be changed, or what has changed and why has it changed. And so, I'm very upset about what's happened at Cypress Creek in the sense that a lot of the stuff that they had proffered is not being done, is an example of what's not being done. Now we're looking at Mallory Point of what's changing, and then we're looking at how are we going to fix this for the future? So it's very, very disheartening to me to see these changes occur, that we're giving the developer these things, and we didn't ask for anything in return. We didn't ask for a reduction in houses. We didn't ask for something else. We just gave him the roundabout that's, that he was supposed to do anyways. And so, I mean, it's just not ideal, in my opinion. And so, a couple of things that I think need to be changed is that when we look at the proffer statements from Cypress Creek, they say something about the 50th occupancy permit, and it has to be given to the homeowners association by the 108th occupancy permit. We shouldn't be using occupancy permit, because that means it's gone all the way through the county. You built the house, and then we're going to hang a home in front of a family and say, "Oh yeah, you can't move in because they haven't given us the fitness center." It should be tied to zoning permits for the town, because we're the town. We're in charge of zoning. We're not in charge of the building permit. We're not really, y'all correct me, but I don't think we're in charge of occupancy permit. So what we are in charge of is a zoning permit. And we'll just use Mallory Point as another example. If Phase 1 Mallory's got about 138 homes in it, you're going to have to issue a zoning permit for every home. Is that correct? So they will have to trigger at some point in Phase 1 when they will make the land available, when they will start construction on the roundabout, when they will start to cut their entrance in at the 80th percent, or the, once 80% of the homes are built, or, or something. So if we get an 80% number, we should be able to say 80% of 140 should be roughly 110 zoning permits. We should say at the 110 zoning permit, you're not getting the 111th until you prove to us where you are in that statement. But we should tie it to zoning permits and not to occupancy permits, so that we're in better control of what's really going on at the level of where this is being delegated.
If I may elaborate on that, that was part of the Mallory proffer amendment, is we actually clarified that Phase E and F could not obtain site plan approval until the roundabout was constructed. And we also made it that they needed to obtain, they had to have the right-of-way before they could submit. So we did clarify that in order to help the town to make sure that they would not be able to commence construction on Phase E and F until that was already set in place.
But still should be tied to a zoning permit, because that's what we're in control of, is the town. The county does their own thing. I don't know how much communication there is between the county and the town on these issues. But what we're in control of is offering the zoning permit, so therefore, we should tie it to the zoning permit. And if the ordinance doesn't say zoning permit, we need to look at the ordinance and say, "We need to tie it to zoning."
We took it one step further. We took it to site plan approval, which would be what comes, as Phase A came here to planning commission, so before planning commission would approve it, we can't issue a zoning permit until after planning commission has already approved it. And so, we took it one step back to kind of make sure that we were trying to stay ahead of it.
I get that. But there's going to be other developments coming down that may not have all these phases, but there may be something tied of, "Once 50 homes are built, we'll put your pool in." I don't know. I don't know how they're going to be worded in the future. But I still think it should be tied to zoning, not to phasing, because we see that. I would assume that if you've got 100 building, zoning permits you're going to offer, you can say, "This is 40 of 100. We're not issuing you number 41 until we have a plan of what's going in place," because we're in control of that. And I'm not so sure the county's tracking all that, and I don't know how they're tracking that with all this development. That's my suggestion for that fix. The other issue. Oh, legal documents. Is this a legal document, or is it just the proffer statement a legal document, what the proffer statements are?
It's an exhibit to the legal document. It's part of, it's incorporated in the proffer statement.
So how do we know that things are being translated from this and everything that they show us is being translated into actual work? Because some of this work may not be done for a decade. Do we need to get so specific on a proffer statement that they're going to, let me use Cypress Creek and their walking trails, that they were supposed to put benches and trees along this, do we need to get so specific on a proffer statement that they're going to say they're going to put five benches in and 32 trees?
Yeah, from now on, we're going to, because we've never had this happen before, ever.
Right. I get that.
Okay, so we've, you know, the, the issue is with HOA and two bocce ball courts and some barbecues and a cabana. Well, the, this has been going on for a long time, and they've been in, the HOA and the developer have been going back and forth on lots of issues, and they're trying to divide it into two issues, and that's fine. One of them is these amenities that have not apparently been included in the recreation facility. But then they have lots of other issues having to do with paving and things like that. And the, we brought this up at the town council meeting the other night, and the mayor said, "Get a written commitment from the developer." And he gave me one. He said, he put it in writing and said, "We're going to do these things, or we will resolve these issues with the HOA." It really isn't, it really should not be, I should not be in the middle of their discussions. He has said he's going to do it. I guess at some point, if he doesn't, then we'll try to decide what we need, what we should do, if anything. But it's very, you know, I don't know what they discussed. I have no idea, except what they tell me.
Yeah, I don't know either. But isn't the proffer statement a contract between the developer and the town and not the HOA? Because the HOA tells me they have no authority whatsoever to move forward.
Well, they're, they were very smart. They refused to accept the deed. And so, that's the leverage they have with the developer, is to resolve all these issues so that they can accept the deed. Now, the bad thing about that is, it postpones the ability of the people who live there to use the facility.
Correct.
And so, it's just sitting there in limbo.
Well, my solution to this is, is then I know when we make recommendations to town council, we'll say, "Yeah, we'll do this. We'll do this with the proffered statements." And we're assuming that those proffers are written and then forwarded on to town council. But we never really finalize or see the final copy of the proffers. At this point forward, I don't think we should make any recommendation to town council until all the proffers are written out, word for word, and they're not going to change from that point forward.
Well, they don't. They don't. They can't change unless, they can't change substantially. If there's any substantial change in the proffers, they have to come back.
I get that. But there's a, there's a process of where we're saying, "We want this. We want that. We want a two-lane roundabout. We want 10,000 trees. We want this." I guess I'm not going to vote on this until that's, until that's specified. If we have to get down to the tree to make sure that the developer's going to do what they say they're going to do, then we need that in the legal document, because we've got to have protection for the people that we're representing. As a homeowners association, these people of the, of the community.
Well, we've had that discussion. And in the future, it would say, "All the amenities that's shown on the site plan, including but not limited to two bocce ball courts, three barbecues, a cabana." I mean, you're right. We're going to, we've never had any, we've never, ever had this issue before.
Right.
Because everybody's always done what they said they were going to do.
Yeah, and I, and that integrity goes a long way.
Well, it does.
And but the problem I have forward now, moving forward, is, is, you know, we got these elaborate site plans, but we don't have anything. I mean, they showed lots of trees in this and, and all these, everything. I mean, even the one for the Grange. But how do we know that they're getting all of the things that were on that plan?
Well, trees are, that's part, we have a zoning ordinance that specifies landscaping, and they have to meet those standards.
And, yeah, I get that. But I don't, I don't, but I don't know how that zoning ordinance applies to the cluster development in Phase 6. I mean, they didn't specifically present us with a landscaping plan that I remember.
They have to, they had to give her landscaping.
There, there should have been a landscaping plan included when the site plan was approved for the Phase 6.
Okay. And then, so let's say I had that document in front of me right now. If that document, so on here, they show X number of benches and trees, but that engineered drawing doesn't show X number of benches and trees, then that's the legal document. But how do we, how do we know that all of these things are being transferred in that document in the future? Because, because I may prove something today, be off the commission, and it doesn't get seen for five years, and nobody has any clue what's really on the conceptual plan versus the final engineered drawing.
What staff would like to do is keep the conceptual plan with those site plans, so when they do come back to planning commission for site plan approval, you can also reference the conceptual plan.
Yeah, I mean, because, I mean, to me, I see this as a huge problem. You know, we're giving away our stuff, and this is not, I think it's not appropriate. That's my opinion. So that's all, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Dr. Pope. Anyone else?
Well, yes. And as Dr. Pope was saying, that, all right, so it's been approved to, to decrease the two-lane roundabout down to one. But the traffic study, or correct me if I'm wrong, wasn't the traffic study for the cottages at Battery, which had not been approved, but the traffic study was dependent on that two-lane roundabout.
So it turns out that the analysis was only conducted on a one lane. So future build-out for Mallory only required a one lane. So any additional development that would trigger that two-lane, that development would be responsible for funding the cost of that road improvement.
If I may.
Yes, sir. Mr. Brown?
Doug telling, Doug telling off of what Dr. Pope just brought up, the issue he just brought up. But I want to start with a question. Director Clary, perhaps you can clarify or verify this for me. It seems that there, there were a number of things to be done with the roads with the approval of Mallory Point. It seems to be, to have been an issue with one of the owners there directly across from Wellington, where there was supposed to have an agreement between the Mallory Point developer and the owner to gain access or right-of-way to an additional turn lane or something there, or exit lane, and they couldn't reach an agreement?
The Bradleys across the street from Wellington that had...
No, ma'am. I believe you're speaking about the church for the right-hand turn lane into Phase A.
I believe they, they were in contact with them. They acquired the right-of-way.
The church? You bring up the church?
Yes, sir. There is a former church. It is not occupied by anyone.
For a long time.
For some long time. That is, it's kind of right across the street from Wellington Estates entrance. It's kind of a catty corner, so if you're coming out of Wellington to the...
It's the building that's up in the trees.
Yes. Yes, sir. And I, I believe that's the property you're speaking about. I don't want to take your words for you. I thought that's a, that's where the right-hand turn lane was to turn into there, and they had to acquire certain property from that, that, I call it a church. I don't know if it's, if it's a church or if it's somebody's private property now or what, but that's what it was.
Okay. Okay. But it didn't happen? As proposed, it didn't happen?
That I don't know.
Okay. And furthermore, the, the change in the roundabout, I would be concerned about the other road improvements that are supposed to come along with Mallory Point. And this, those improvements involve pretty much every intersection from the circle all the way down to, not Battery Park Road, but Nike Park Road, to Reynolds, the developer proffered to do improvements to that intersection. But now, because the county is doing something at that intersection, I don't know how that's going to affect the developer's proffer.
I can speak to that, Mr.
And furthermore, the intersections at Titus Creek and Nike Park is supposed to be improved, tied to a phase. The intersection at Titus Creek and Smithneck Road is supposed to be improved by the Mallory Point developer, and Reynolds and Smithneck Road improvements. And there were supposed to be improvements all the way down to Smithneck Road and 17, but VDOT has gotten involved since the approval of Mallory Point, and they may be doing things at that intersection. And I'm just concerned about what is going to be done and will not be done as this development goes forward. I just wanted to mention that.
Yeah, Mr. Brown, the, the intersection improvements you talked about have not come off the table. But I was part of the decision with the roundabouts, and I feel I need to address why my, why I felt the council voted this way and why my opinion would vote this way. So the, the traffic improvement analysis, the original traffic improvement analysis was done on one, on a one-lane roundabout, as Ms. Clary just said. And we, we did ask for a two-lane roundabout, and the developer agreed to it. The change in this was based on some of my experience with two-lane roundabouts and their not being particularly useful, particularly the one at College Drive. But the developer did give enough land for a two-lane roundabout to be constructed, so that in the future, if a two-lane roundabout is warranted by the traffic study. And this, this request for a one lane was requested by VDOT. It did not come from the developer. VDOT asked for this change, and I tend to yield to people that, that know more about traffic than I, and VDOT is certainly one of those most of the time anyhow. So, but he did, he did proffer enough land that if it is ever warranted, that you don't have to go through the piece of acquiring additional land, so the land is there. Additionally, if a development down the road were to warrant a two-lane traffic circle there, a traffic impact analysis would be conducted, and they would say, "Well, we need this to be two-lane." When the TIA is there, it becomes your tool for the roundabout to make the developer pay for, the future developer pay for the, the increase in traffic on that. So if this council or the, the town council wishes, they could use that as a proffer to get that to a two-lane roundabout. A roundabout as it exists now, Tammy, if you'll help me, 25,000 cars per day? Is that, is that what it is?
I believe so, yes.
I believe that was the number we were given. And we're looking at 13 to 14, and they think it's going to be quite some time. And that's even with the build-out of Mallory Scott. I think it's quite some time until that gets, gets done. With the improvements that the developer has proposed for, for Reynolds Road and Nike Park, you know that VDOT is extending Nike Park out to 17. After the proffers came through, the developer offered an additional $1 million to the county to make that project happen. The county was a million dollars short, and the developer helped that, because they wanted to see that extension out to 17. So while I have no, you know, relationship or defend these guys, I don't want it to sound like we just gave every single thing away, because we haven't. We felt that the, the roundabout was appropriate at one lane, and there is the ability to expand it to two lanes, and there is a tool in place that if it does get expanded to two lanes, what, and if there's a development that triggers that, that, that tool can be in place for that development to pay for. And then, you know, they're continuing with the, you know, there's been no other talk of waiving any of the other improvements. I believe when we counted that, there was like either 14 or 17 traffic improvements on that traffic plan for Mallory Scott from Battery Park Road all the way out to 17. And there've been no changes other than right there at the roundabout that I'm aware of.
I will just also add, a part of that proffer amendment was at the request of Isle of White County. Because of the Reynolds extension, there was a signal warrant analysis that was proffered.
Yes.
That the county indicated would not be, would not be required, because their data didn't, didn't show that it was needed.
Well, does a single-lane roundabout handle four lanes of traffic, two lanes in each direction? So Battery Park goes from a two-lane road to a four-lane road. Is a single-lane roundabout going to handle a four-lane road coming into it? If Nike Park gets expanded to a four-lane road from the extension back to Battery Park, is a single-lane roundabout going to handle two incoming lanes, two outgoing lanes?
Dr. Pope, they can. I've, I've seen them where they do. But at that time, also, that, you know, what's, what warrants Battery Park going to four lanes and what warrants Nike Park? Maybe that's one of the things that drives the additional lanes in the roundabout. I, I like roundabouts. I think they're a great thing. But two-lane roundabouts, and there's one right down by Ruhrstone Tribe House, which I've become intimately familiar with this year. It is a two-lane roundabout, and it is one of the most confusing roundabouts that I've ever been a part of. And it's humongous. It's, it's huge. It's probably the size of this, of the Smithfield Center building here. There was an accident on it last week. There, I mean, there's a tractor trailer that flipped on it last week and had everybody goofed up. So...
I mean, I find it hard to believe that Mallory Point's not going to trigger more lanes coming through there. You know, in that sense, I find it very difficult to believe that that's not going to trigger a four-lane road for Battery Park and, and Nike Park to come through. There ain't going to be any more development on Battery Park Road. I mean, Mallory Point owns it all, other than a few little parcels like the church and a couple of little things up front. That's not going to be a significant addition to traffic. So...
No, the development will probably come along Nike Park. I mean, that's your most next logical development.
But then that means it's in the county. And is the county going to force them to fix our roundabout in the town? I mean, that's what I worry about, is that we look up here at Turner Drive and what's going on, and who's contributing what and what percentage? And paying $2.1 million from the town of some X number figured for a roundabout that probably isn't really going to affect us. We're contributing a lot of money to this, and we had the developer on the table for this money, and I just feel like we let him off, and that was his contribution to not having a perfect plan, but an acceptable plan in my mind with all the concessions that he gave, and we let him out of it. That's, that just doesn't settle well with me. So that's just my thoughts. I just find it really disappointing.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. Other comments before we move on?
One, one other comment.
Mr. Pack.
This is my last meeting, obviously. Thank you, guys, for the kind of words earlier. I wanted to just let you know how it works moving forward from here, because I am the town council representative. In January, the town council will elect a mayor, whether it continues to be Mayor Bowman or a new mayor. And once that mayor is seated, they will appoint a new town council member to be the town council rep to planning commission. So in likelihood, you guys won't have a town council rep at your January 14th meeting, but more, more likely in February. So it's been a pleasure to serve, and I wish you guys the best.
We appreciate your hard work.
Lots of tough decisions to go ahead.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thanks, Rainie.
Thank you. You've been a great help.
Thanks, Charles.
All right. Next item is public hearing on special use permit at 803 South Church Street, Red Point Tap House. Can we have the staff report first, please?
Yes, thank you. The staff report does detail the phasing of this project. They were going to pave the park... Yes, thank you. Uh, the staff report does detail the, um, phasing of this project. They were going to pave the parking lot and connect to town water by June of twenty twenty-two. Um, in October second of twenty twenty-four, the town council, uh, granted the S U P for a waiver of parking and loading requirements, which did allow them to keep their gravel parking and drive area. This was provided that the applicants return with a special use permit, uh, in order to keep the commercial structure connected to a private well. Town staff do recommend an unfavorable recommendation to town council for the private well connection as it is in conflict with our design standards. Thank you.
Great. All right. Public hearing is officially open. Do we have any speakers signed up? No one signed up to speak on this item. Um, anybody in the gallery decide they want to speak? Now's your chance. Okay. Hearing none. Um, does the applicant wish to speak on this item? I'm sorry, public hearing's closed.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Tim Ryan, one one two two zero Shelter Coast, Smithfield, Virginia.
Uh, Nick has two twenty-three South Church Street, Smithfield, Virginia.
And we're here tonight to request a special use permit to waive our requirement to hook to town water. I think many of you all have heard this case a couple of different times. It's about the third or fourth time we've had to come up and present it. But just to kind of recap where we are on it, we're asking for the waiver first because we don't believe the design standards, uh, meet what our requirements are as a commercial building. I think it's a shoe that doesn't fit our foot. The, uh, the requirement to have a two-inch water main come across the road to that we would never use. Again, we just have a step down and it'd go right back to exactly what we have, uh, does not meet, uh, does does not fit what I I believe the design standards, uh, were intended to do, which I believe was to give enough water to a commercial building for sprinklers, et cetera, et cetera, which we're never going to have. So we don't need any more water than we have. Uh, so the the design standard says we have to have this. That doesn't make sense in our case. Second, is it to do that, we just have an enormous negative economic impact on us as a built as a business. Uh, it would have been about sixty-five percent of last year's profit. It'd be close to a hundred percent of this year's profit. Wipe us out. So if you want to put us out of business, it's a good way to do it. Third, uh, and lastly, we, uh, we, at the request of in in cooperation with H R S D, are going to put in a billing meter. There was a question about, hey, H R S D doesn't know how much water you use, and so, so, so on. So with H R S D, uh, we've agreed to put in a billing meter. That has to be in by the twenty-eighth of this month. Uh, we're probably going to put that in this coming weekend. So the issues that were, uh, addressed or brought up to us in the previous meetings, I don't we don't believe the design standards fit what we what we are and what we will ever will be in that building. Second, the economic impact would just wipe us out. And third, the, um, we're installing a meter. So, Nick.
No, you hit everything on it. Uh, I will say that, you know, we're coming before you guys as the planning commissioner. You just talked about, Dr. Pope, as a proffer. The big developer didn't come to us. So we paid four hundred bucks to the small business to come change our proffer. So we did the right avenues that wasn't changed, you know, at the last meeting. So we are, I feel like, as you just talked about, you know, it's coming before you guys again for a proffer to be changed.
Subject to your questions.
What did you say about sprinklers?
Well, is my understanding of the reason why the design standards for commercial buildings is the way it is, at least this is what I understand, is so that the building, a commercial building, would have sufficient water for sprinklers or other sorts of commercial sorts of uses. Uh, we don't have those issues and never will have these issues. We're never going to put sprinklers in that building. So if you ran a two-inch water main across the road and brought it up to the front of our building, we'd reduce it down to three-quarters of an inch, and it'd go in the building just the same way as the well water does. So it wouldn't be any change. It would just be an incredible expense to us, over thirty thousand dollars.
And you don't feel you need sprinklers?
No.
I thought that any business needed to have sprinklers.
No, it's not a requirement. And we were checked out by the, uh, well, it's not Fire Marshal, but the Fire Department, uh, prior to opening to make sure that we had everything we need. We've got all the fire suppression systems and the, uh, and the hood system that we have in the kitchen. We have fire extinguishers. We have everything that is required.
For our square footage. We don't meet the we don't meet the requirement for the square footage for sprinklers.
Thank you.
Just to clarify the design standards, when a commercial property is renovated, the design standards require the water service line to be upgraded to a two-inch service, and then it can be bushed down to what is needed. Uh, this is so that the tap of the main for the commercial structure is already two inches. If the the, uh, Red Point Tap House leaves and another commercial structure comes in, they already have that connection. That's why we have it in place, so that we're not, again, tearing up South Church Street to make a larger connection.
And is it true that that with the bridge still under construction, you're never going to get it any less expensive?
We believe so. Yes, that is correct.
So I guess I thought we had settled this issue already and kicked the can down the road until after the bridge was finished. So you're appealing that decision essentially.
Well, your recommendation was to do that. The town council, uh, said to come back with a because the
With the water meter. They recommended us to do that.
Well, and they they said to come back with a special use, a request for a special use permit, uh, a waiver through a special use permit.
Okay.
Because that the water wasn't part of the original request.
Gotcha. Okay. What's your pleasure, ladies and gentlemen?
Well, I'm always the pessimist, but you agreed to this before you opened your business that you were going to bring the property into compliance. Why you didn't do it on day number one versus day year five, I don't know. You promised this. You said you were going to do it. John Settle, you said last meeting, one of the meetings that he held a gun to your head and said you had to do this. I doubt that. But I bet he was saying that you're that all commercial properties in the town need to be brought up to code. And bringing up to code means town water, town sewer, and all the things that go along with that. And y'all agreed to do that. And I think we have to hold your feet to the fire because it's the same thing we're asking the big developer to do, the little developer to do, and everything else. And y'all have had the opportunity to do that, and this is something you had said you were going to do, and you don't wish to do it. I understand it's a financial strain. I get it. I'm trying to do our own additions with our own financial strains, but it's something that you agreed to do, and that's the problem I have with this. I hate to see you think that it's going to create a financial burden on you that's going to shut your business down, but you agreed to do it. And that's that's where I am on the issue with this.
Part of the agreeance in the beginning also was, uh, when the town, uh, planners came out, they said we'd be able to tap off of, uh, next door that already went to the vet clinic. So it would have been like, it would have been five thousand dollars. It'd have been a lot cheaper because it's already across. Uh, that was not the case. So it then it changed after that. And the whole gun in the head was the analogy that John Settle said, if you don't do these two things, you will not get approved. So and I and I get it. I took one hundred percent agree with you. We said we would do it, and now we're asking not to do it.
But he's saying that you've got to bring your property up to compliance, and that's going to be true for every future development here, especially anything down South Church Street that's not in compliance is going to have to be brought into compliance. I'm assuming that's correct, but and 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 this property has been that way and and.
So, excuse me. So so any of those residents that are down South Church Street today will say they they go to commercial, and and I understand that's part of the plan. So every one of those, the house built nineteen sixty-six, forty-eight, whatever, they're going to have to dig up their front yard and come put a two-inch water main into those houses. Is that is that what the plan is?
If that's what the town staff recommends in order to make sure that they're compliant with whatever commercial use that they have to do, then they're going to have to do that. And that and that would be true.
And I think that would be a difference between residential and commercial, would it?
Well, but their residential going to commercial.
If they change uses.
Yes. Okay. The other thing that's not mentioned here, but it's it's in our agenda here in the, uh, the director's report, she refers to section eighty-two tag forty-five to have commercial structure connected to a private well. Town code, that's town code. And when you read that code, it simply says it's against the law not to connect to town water wherever town water is provided. It's against the law not to.
Against a Virginia law? What 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 law?
Smithfield Town Code.
Town Code.
Town Code. Okay. Okay.
Well, yeah, like we talked about before, there's other businesses that have been approved before this commission to use a well as well. So.
Well, and and you all made the town code probably eighty years after that building went into service as a commercial building. The building's been there since nineteen twenty-nine, been on the same well since nineteen twenty-nine. The code changed after.
Infrastructure and a lot of other things changed.
I I have a little bit different take on this, uh, than what it sounds like some of you guys do.
Please share.
Um, I see this as an unnecessary burden to a to an existing business. Um, things change. Uh, we we have a a a nice restaurant in town that has struggled prior to being a restaurant to be any type of viable business in town. It's been a dog grooming place. It has been a hair cutting place. It has been many different things over the years.
Consignment shop.
Yeah, with many, many different uses. And we now have a a viable business there. Uh, obviously, I'm partial to restaurants, being in the restaurant business myself. So I maybe my my heart feels a little more for these guys. But they exist. They work. They they, you know, contribute to our tax base. They contribute to the enjoyment of the neighborhood, particularly, uh, if you don't want to cross into downtown and have to drive all the way around to come back. It's nice to have a restaurant that you can sit down and eat at on that side of town. Uh, that is short term. I get hopefully it's only another year that we have to deal with that. Um, but what we're asking these guys to do is to spend thirty thousand dollars or 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 more and get no benefit for their business on it. All it does is make them compliant with our code. And I believe that we have some reason to be reasonable in in laying out our our rulings for people. We have the ability to do that, uh, and and, you know, to make them come on to it because we think that it we need to be compliant when they've been in existence for five years and working as they are. I believe it to be an unnecessary burden, and I just I just I can't be in favor of of making these guys come to comply with that.
I think it would be different if they were doing a huge expansion of their beer making part of the business, and they needed more water, and there was an obvious return on their investment. Um, but I I kind of I tend to lean with you, Rainy, that it's it's a huge expense. I don't know what the logistics were about not being able to connect on the same side of the road as the vet and why that wasn't viable, but, um, having to to tap across the street, it's a huge expense. And 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 I agree with you. It's
Let me offer you two two counterarguments. What did we do to Farmer Services and Ace Hardware when they upgraded? We made them give up their well for their building. They use it for their wash stations. They use it for their cement operations. But they use town water for their toilets inside and their potable water. We made them connect when they when they made a major renovation to their business.
That's not true. What we did is we allowed them to go onto a well
Yeah.
to do their cement and come off of town water. They were one of the number two town water users.
I thought they had a well, and then they came on to the town.
They they had they had two services. They have one for, like you're right, you're saying, for for the interior stuff, the toilets and and that stuff in the building. But their major source was for their cement operation. And four or five years ago, when they changed, we allowed them to go to a well for the cement operation, come off town water, because they didn't need the treated water for their for the industrial portion of the business.
And what if Mr. Settle, second argument, what if Mr. Settle had said to them, you can't open your business until you tap into the water? He gave them a two-year grace period to do such. What if he had have said on day number one, you can't get your your zoning or your zoning permit or oxygen permit if you don't go ahead and hook up? We wouldn't be here today if he had held his feet to the fire then, when it should have been brought into compliance at that time.
That wasn't his decision. He didn't do that. The the planning commissioner of the town council did that.
Way back then? I don't.
Yeah, you did. You gave him, you granted them, uh, you you didn't require them to connect immediately. There was it was.
Because they wanted to wait till they paved their parking lot and all the other issues.
Yeah, but I mean, it wasn't it wasn't the staff's decision to defer that. That was done by the council and the.
Okay.
If I may, the applicant, it was discussed, the applicant gave us figures from their revenues, their business, uh, when we discussed this previously. And one of the commissioners here, uh, let it be known that part of your business plan, and when you're coming up with businesses, is to include the cost of starting up a business. And this should have been, I mean, that should have been considered by the applicant. That's not the town's, uh, misstep. The town did misstep there. The other, we've given them a grace period, two years, in order for the bridge to be completed and traffic returns to normal. And at that point, that's what they have, two years grace period to connect to the town water. Now, after the bridge is completed and all the traffic is back to normal, the customers, I mean, if you're good business, of course, customers, the number of customers is going to increase because of free-flowing traffic and such. Two years, after two years, you would be enjoying all of the revenue and profits from increased business at that point. You'll still be out of compliance if this is granted, if you what you want tonight is granted. And I I think that's not fair to all other businesses that are in compliance. And when we start this, waivers of, uh, these special use permits not to do what the town has in law, how many others? If we set that example, how many others in the future is going to come to us and ask for such an exception? And we're looking, looking into the future, we expect South Church Street to change based on our comprehensive plan. We expect that road to to change. And that's in addition to the sidewalks that's planned for and the widening of the road. So.
Well, Mr. Brian, if 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 another business comes to us in the future and asks for a waiver, and it makes sense to do so, why will we not grant it? That's what a special use permit does. That's one of the beautiful things about it. It's like we can, we can do it on a case-by-case business. And if it is a reasonable exception, if it makes sense to do it, that's when I think we should. I don't think we need to be in the business of being in 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 any more bureaucratic than we need to be.
And I understand this, you know. I I I understand there there's some in in the public who think we're being anti-business. That's not the case.
Mr. Ritt.
I just want to explain, just so you know, Mr., this property is very unique. There's nothing like this anywhere else, um, because it was annexed by the time many years ago, and it was the Phelps property, and there was a family. There were several houses. This property, and it was all served by a well prior to the town acquiring this. And so we never extended water there because, and and essentially, they were grandfathered. But it's never, um, the the thing that triggered this was their application to the town to renovate the property and do certain things. And that's what made them come into a a situation where they were, they had to ask for the initial waiver, the initial delay, um, because the ordinance required them to connect. But up until then, the dog groomers and the every other business, nothing ever triggered this. But just so you know, you said, well, what happens if somebody else comes along and asks for the same thing? We don't have anything else like this. This is a unique and different situation. I'm not saying you should grant it yes or no, but I'm just saying you need to say, you you can't say, well, what are we going to do for the next guy who wants this kind of, uh, of a deal? And there is no next guy because we don't have this situation anywhere else.
Well, we have other noncompliant lots within the town. So.
Well, we do, but we have laws that deal with noncom, we have laws that specifically deal with noncompliant existing uses. Um, that's because we in the town, the municipal government imposed a modern zoning ordinance on property that was not developed initially under a modern zoning ordinance. And so there had to be mechanisms to deal with that. And we have that in our zoning ordinance. This doesn't deal with zoning. This has to do with utilities, and it's completely, they're somewhat tied together because there's their zoning requests triggered the the upgrade to utilities. But the zoning ordinance and the town code are completely different, um, in that they're not exactly tied together.
Well, I hate to jump the gun here, but aren't y'all the applicant for the next agenda item?
I am.
But that's now bringing a second business on to the well. That is now a second business tied to the well, and now you're expanding that.
That's not treated as a business.
An Airbnb is not considered commercial?
That's not treated as a residential use. They would not, the town code would not, the utility standards don't require that a residential structure be connected to the town water like that.
And you're saying Airbnb is not a business?
For the for the purpose of, it's not considered to be a commercial structure. It's in the nature of a residential structure. It's be, well, Mr. Bryan, there are houses all over the town of Smithfield. It's be, well, Mr. Brian, there are houses all over the town of Smithfield that are rented out by their owners, and they are not treated as commercial entities, they're treated like residential structures. Because it just happened to be residential structures that the owner rents to someone else so that they can live there.
We're treating it as a commercial structure because it's an SUP for a full-time use of an Airbnb as opposed to just a short time, term rental that would be permitted by right.
Do they connect to town water?
We are requesting that, that they do connect to the town water, uh, it has been extended across in front of the property right there on Jordan Lumar.
So it's available?
It is, yes, sir.
So it's just a, a tie-in fee for them not actually running the pipe like it is for townhouses.
They would, they would still need to tap the main and run their service line.
But the main is there.
The main is right in front of the property.
You know, no matter what we do, we're, we're going, we're damned if we do, damned if we don't. We're either tough on a small business, or we are, you know, not enforcing our regulations. And the people, the people out there, some of them are going to complain, some are not. I too have a good deal of heartburn to insist on this if it's not needed. And the beauty of our ordinances is that we have these SUPs set up for special uses, you know, for special reasons. There, there are people who thinks SUPs should never be allowed, but that's, I don't think that they are correct. I tend to think that this would be for what you're, you're doing, and now that you are having a meter put in, because that was a part of it, there was no meter for what your usage was, and therefore the, um, the sewer. So I, I get it, I also have a hard time reconciling that you said you were going to do it, then you didn't do it. Then you came back and said, we'll do it in two more years, and you didn't do it. So now, you've got two years, but anyway.
I don't think they're asking for two years, they're asking for a final decision tonight.
But there, there wasn't a decision on two years, that was a recommendation.
That was a recommendation we made to town council when town council changed what we did.
Yeah, but, but yes. So I applaud you for coming back and laying it all out for us.
So, so clear for me, the two years that we recommended to town council, what did town council do through it?
Come back and apply for it now.
Come back and apply for a special.
Did they accept the two-year?
No.
They did not?
Because what we took through last time, even though we thought that it was just going to encompass both the parking lot and the water meter, which we spent a lot of time talking about the wa, water service. When it got to town council, there was actually only a special use permit request for the, the parking lot issues, not the water. So they said, oh, you got to go back through the, you know, run another lap again. And that's why we're here today, is to get a special use permit, a waiver, from connecting to town, uh, town water. The thing I would ask again is go back, I, I would ask you to go back as a citizen, but also one who's been here too many times already, uh, why do you have the rule? And you're going to run into this regardless of whether it's hooked into our well or not, but every one of those residences along South Church, if you're going to ask them to hook, to, to do a two-inch water main, not a one of them will ever use that water.
We're not asking residents to do that, only businesses.
But I'm saying, but all those, those residences that are along South Church, because the intent is to turn those little houses into commercial entities, whether they be an office building, take walls insurance, that was, that was a house, or any one of those down at that end. So if you're going to go back and say, okay, every one of you all now has to change your water main to a two-inch, for what reason, I'm not sure, that, you're going to run into this a bunch of times if you're going to enforce it the same way you are on us, because they don't need it. We don't need it, either in this property or the one I'm about to talk to you about in a minute.
But there's a difference, Mr. Brian, because there's a requirement to connect to water, you're, you're asking, they're already connected to town water.
Yes, but, but.
But Nigel, my finish, they're already connected to town water, you're just not connected to town water at all. So there's a distinction there between, so, I mean, you know, you're making a point, but not, it's, it's not a home run.
It is a slightly different use case, but the point is, is that not only do they have to connect to town water, which they already are, they have to connect to a town water with a two-inch main, is, it's what I just heard, am I, am I wrong in that?
That, it depends on what the use of the building.
If it's commercial, I'm saying, if you're, if you're, if you're going to convert any of these residences along South Church to a commercial use, then by what I just heard, the rule is.
Will they have to upgrade to a two-inch?
That is what our design standards state.
And somebody has to ask, I'm asking, does that even make sense? I got the connect to town water, not connect to town water, but the two-inch water main thing does, which is another use case that I'm going to run into.
It doesn't make any sense if I'm a lawyer and have one bathroom and only need a three-quarter inch line, but they still have to upgrade to two-inch and downgrade it, that's part of their startup cost if somebody wishes to buy that building. Suppose I buy five of those buildings in a row and tear them down and put a strip mall there, you think they're going to require me to upgrade?
Well, that would be a different use case, that would be a different use case. My point is, is that, I'm asking, and my first point was, does the rule make sense in our case or others who are in similar situations where we don't need, we don't need, well, we don't need a two-inch main, one. Uh, we don't need town water, number two. But, but you're going to run into these similar, similar like cases as you go down the road, as you convert these residences into commercial buildings. And if you're going to ask each one of them to upgrade, just ask yourself as a small business owner, how much money does that cost? I mean, every dime counts. And I don't need schooling on whether we should have had a right business plan and all that sort of stuff, I got it, I'm a business coach, I know how to do business planning, right? We didn't know what the cost was going to be, the town wasn't clear on what the cost was going to be. And we got forced to do everything from front yard parking SUPs to, you know, zero lot line SUPs and all, and we finally said, just tell us what we need to do, and we'll, we'll, we'll dance on the head of a pin. Because what would have happened had we not done that, is the town wouldn't have gotten about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars worth of meals tax from us over the last couple of years. Uh, a hundred thousand last year, in fact. Uh, so, you know, that's what wouldn't have happened, we wouldn't have had a place where people could go and, and have, you know, a nice meal and drink and whatnot. That place would have still been a some dog grooming shop. So we took the risk, we, we put our necks out there, we put our own money out there, and, and now you're just increasing burden. Thirty thousand dollars is a complete waste of money, that's what it's going to cost us to do that, complete waste of money.
That's just to get it across the street.
Yeah, and then we got to plummet it.
Yeah, we've had a couple of analysis in the beginning of the project, in front of us is original South Church Street, and it is, I don't even know how many layers of street there is.
Because there's.
To get through that.
Yeah, so our front yard was Route 10 before the new bridge came in, so it's, there's like ten inches of concrete out there.
So, uh, ladies and gentlemen, have we had all the discussion on this as you can stand?
I was going to ask, say, do we need to beat this horse any longer?
The chair will entertain a motion if there is one.
I would make a motion that we, uh, re-institute the two-year extension that was approved by this commission previously.
They've made an application for a special use permit, you can put conditions on the special use permit, that's the whole point, that's the, that's what goes hand in hand with that, I'm not sure what your, your motion really is, Mr. Brian. It would be to grant a special use permit for two years? Um, to, and then require them to connect, is that, I mean, because they're asking for a special use permit to be for a waiver from the obligation to connect, so.
Mr. Brian, I can assure you that, well, I guess I can't, never mind, the, the town council that was up through this year was asking for a decision, yes or no, not for an extension, they were looking for a recommendation, yes or no. Does not mean you can't do that, and the new town council may feel differently, but the, the town council that is in offices of December thirty, until December thirty first, was asking for a, a yes or no on, on the SUP. But you, again, that, that doesn't really matter, you can do whatever you like.
Not hearing a second to Mr. Brian's motion, I'd like to offer an alternative motion that we recommend, uh, approval to the town council for the SUP to not connect to town water.
Second.
The motion and a second. I think we'd better call for the vote on this one. Mr. Brian?
No.
Mr. Pack?
Yes.
Dr. Pope?
No.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Yoko?
No.
And Chairwoman Hillgas?
Yes.
Motion fails.
So, is town council next minute?
Can you not go to the town council with an unfavorable recommendation, because the town council has the ultimate decision to decide what they wish to do.
Yeah, I mean, they're going to have the final decision anyway.
There's, they can go to the town council with no recommendation, is effectively waived, because it's not an unfavorable recommendation. It's, it's no rec, it's, it's not favorable or unfavorable.
Right, it's an entire decision.
Not that we want to prolong this any longer, but with Mr. Davidson being here, we, we, we have an odd number, we have, we can't vote tonight. Or we can't get a recommendation probably.
You can, maybe this be carried over to January.
Well, there's an opportunity there that it'll also be six in January as well.
Right, right.
That's true.
Yeah.
Um, I, if, if the, if the mayor were to move quickly in January and appoint on the seventh and have somebody here on the fourteenth, perhaps, but more likely it's February.
It's still only going to be six people. So, do we need to do anything, or it can just go on the town?
It's really.
Agenda, with no recommendation.
It's, I, I think it's, the planning commissioner needs to make a recommendation on one way or the other, and if you can't tonight, then you probably need to.
Do you mean to table this issue until we were able to have a deciding vote?
I think so, because, I mean, it's not, it, it doesn't change their situation any, I mean, they're, I mean.
It's not like they could, they could get the line put in or not by February anyway.
And you're not paying.
And it does meet the October second request that they return with an SUP request, to keep them in compliance, or from being out of compliance, so that keeps them.
The fact that y'all haven't taken action doesn't, that, they've done what they were required to do.
Is there any room for negotiating on this to get to a recommendation, or is everybody going to sit?
For me, no, I mean, this property over the years, we have worked with them multiple times on multiple issues, including additions that were not done in compliance and had to come back after the fact, do zero lot line additions for their deck. We had to come back for the refrigerator approvals, there have been multiple special use permits on this property that we've gone through with them and they're growing pains, now I understand they're limited by their lot size and I get that, and we were more than helpful with helping them with this. This was a request made by the town, and I, and I feel we need to support our town staff and their recommendations for future upgrades to the properties that need to be done across the town, and it comes down to supporting our town staff on this.
I understand and respect that, that's my good.
For me, I, I'm not willing to budge.
Fair.
Third, moving on. Do you have a motion to table this to the probably February meeting?
Second.
Is there a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any post? All right, we'll see you all again in February, I know you're excited about that. Next item is, uh, public hearing, again, on a special use permit, 104 Jordan Drive, Ms. Clary, we have a staff report.
Yes, thank you, the applicant is seeking approval to rent 104 Jordan Drive, which is an existing single-family residential dwelling as a short-term rental property. According to the Article 2Z1, they, short-term rentals are permitted as principal uses only after acquiring a special use permit. There are no changes to the property that are proposed. Uh, in accordance with town code, the applicant should be required to connect the structure to town water. Positives, this application provides additional accommodations in town, and approval should be contingent on the completion of an affidavit. Negatives, it is not a by right use and does require an SUP, thank you.
Great, thank you. Public hearing is now open, do we have any speakers signed up? Our first speaker this evening is Randy Keaton, if you would come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, please, sir.
Good evening, Randy Keaton, 104 Lumar Road, um, my house is directly across from this property. When I first saw the special use, um, placard go up, I contacted town staff and got a copy of the application and, you know, learned about what the, how many nights they could have by right currently, which is a hundred and four nights, and this would be converting it to basically three hundred and sixty-five nights a year. I consider that a, a small hotel rather than a residential property. Right now, my understanding from town staff is that there are two other properties in town that have a special use permit for a short-term rental, you know, every night of the year. One of them is in, in town enterprise, almost directly across from town hall, and the other is on a cul-de-sac in the, in the historic district downtown. There are no other, you know, properties like this in this neighborhood, so I did some research on this and, uh, right now you have a limitation of a hundred and two nights. According to the information the applicant submitted with their application, there's already been a hundred and forty-one nights rented at this property in 2024, and that began in March, so this has been continuously rented, um, so they've already exceeded a hundred and four nights already before they, before they apply for the SUP, for the special use permit. Um, I read some of the reviews and, one of the reviews in July said they enjoyed being in a quiet neighborhood, and that's exactly what Red Point is, a quiet neighborhood, it is not a commercial area. Uh, this again is directly across from my house, um, one of my neighbors is up next, and she'll, she'll talk about some of the noise issues that have been had, some parking issues on the street. This property sits right in the curve, so as soon as you turn up Jordan, it's the second house to the right, there's a, there's a concrete wall there, apparently people used to cut the corner off, and so it's a very, it's a blind curve there and, and if, if someone is parked in the street, it'd be very difficult to see. The property advertises as three bedrooms to accommodate eight guests, um, but they only have three parking spaces and, and one of those is under the, and this would be nose to tail in the driveway, so there's not a lot of parking there. You know, the, the application was very minimal, um, as far as what would provide, but I think the key point is, this would be, according to, um, Ms. Clary just a few minutes ago, this would be commercial use in a residential area that has no other commercial uses, and I think that would be a, um, a serious detriment to the neighborhood. You know, right now, it, it's, it's, you know, again, a hundred and four days a year, anyone can do theirs a hundred and four days a year. But this, this property's already exceeded a hundred and four days a year with the current setup in, you know, under Airbnb. So I would, I would strongly encourage that this not be approved and that frankly, no other ones be approved in a residential area like Red Point or any other neighborhoods, and I guess the question is, would any of you want to have this across from your house in your neighborhood? You know, would you like to have someone potentially every other day, a different person to stay directly across from your house? And I think that's the question, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Keaton. Our next speaker signed up is Jennifer Bell. Ms. Bell, if you come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Jennifer Bell, 103 Lumar Road. There's not much that I can say after Randy just said everything. I know that he did say that, I had, um, a couple of things to say about the crowd issue, um, within this Airbnb. Roughly October fourth, um, the weekend, October third through October sixth, um, there was, um, they had a, uh, a rental, and, um, at three o'clock in the afternoon, um, there was, uh, several, not eight people, several as in probably about twenty-five to thirty people within the, um, confinement of the little small backyard that is fenced in. Um, there was loud music, there was, um, obvious drinking, um, you could tell alcohol, canned bottles, um, loudness, um, and again, it was three o'clock in the afternoon before the children even got home from school. I don't want this in my neighborhood, there are other things that I really don't want in my neighborhood that I did not fight for, that I probably should have. And I didn't, but, um, obviously, the applicant cannot follow rules. And, um, I, I just have a problem, like Mr. Keaton said, with different people being in my face, uh, every day, a, a s- Mr. Keaton said, with different people being in my face, uh, every day, a, a s- different person instead of, it's, it's a neighborhood. It's, you have neighbors that you know and you come to know, and children, grandchildren running around this neighborhood, and, and I don't, I just, you don't know who's coming and going. You just don't. So, um, I really don't have anything else to say, but I really hope that you guys consider, um, the children of the neighborhood when you bring in strangers. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bell. Anyone else who would like to speak on this issue at this time, now's your chance. Okay, hearing none, we will close the public hearing. Um, would, does the applicant wish to speak on this issue? You look familiar, but please state your name and address for the record.
It's been a fun night, right. So, again, I'm Tim Ryan, 11220 Shelter Cove, Smithfield, Virginia. So, I own this property with a business partner in, in my real estate business. Um, so, I'm here tonight asking for a special use permit to use 104 Jordan as a full-time, uh, short-term rental. It's actually not going to be full-time, but it's, it's more than 104 days a, a year as a short-term rental. As a little bit of background, as mentioned earlier, purchased the property at the end of October of, uh, last year, renovated the property, furnished it, and then we put it on the market in March. Uh, we did an affidavit before I even put the first tenant in, or not tenant, first guest in there. We did an affidavit for the town, so you already have that. I did that per the town code to tell the town, hey, I'm, I, my plan was to rent it as a midterm rental, traveling nurses, et cetera, et cetera, because it's furnished, uh, but there may be some short-term use. I hired a company called Evolve to manage the bookings. They syndicated out to VRBO, et cetera, et cetera. So, we started getting a lot of short-term, uh, use, but also had long-term, you know, the outage. We've had Smithfield Foods executives in there, et cetera, et cetera. So, as the summer went on, and again, it's, it's sometimes hard to count exact days, but after I went over 104 days, and again, I've been paying taxes all along, so it was a 12% tax on short-term use between the, uh, the state, county, and the, uh, and the town, so I've been paying that all along, but as soon as we went over 104, I just happened to be at the town, uh, hall and saw Mark and said, hey, you gotta do a special use permit, so I did. That was in September, I believe, so I'm trying to be as compliant as I can with what the town's asking to do. Uh, so, uh, okay, so now, economic impact. So, this is the difference between a short-term and a long-term. Short, a long-term's by right, right? So, I can do that without having to pay the town the extra taxes. It's 12% taxes if I'm doing short-term versus long-term over 30 days. But the economic impact, since this has been open, we've had 35 bookings, and I understand it, and I'll address the other issues in a second, but 35 bookings with approximately four adults per booking. Those folks are coming in for weddings, they're coming in for, in one case, a funeral, they're coming in for high school graduations, they're coming in for a lot of different things, but there's four adults typically in a, in a booking, and we're encouraging them to shop local. We're giving them gift certificates to shop in town, to go to local businesses, to enjoy what Smithfield is all about. We encourage that. We've got things inside the house that helps to promote the history of Smithfield and the small-town feeling that it, that it brings about. Um, so, there's, there's goodness in that. It's a long-term rental. If you look at, in comparison, you'd have one to three adults who are shoppers in town, but not in the same way that you would have for folks that come out, from out of town. For example, we had a couple ladies came in for the mistletoe market a couple weekends ago. They came here just for that. That gave them a place to stay so they could shop local. Um, so, again, this is not, you know, Conrad Hilton scale stuff, but we're talking about $45,000 of gross revenue per year for a, a unit like this, right? You're not going to get rich off of it. With about maybe $8,000 of profit if all goes well, and you don't have air conditioners go out like I have had. So, that's about $2,700 of town tax. They get 6%. So, town's going to get 6, $2,700, the state, and everybody else gets about $8,000. I get about $7,000 before my own taxes, right? So, it's not like a big moneymaker here, but it is a little better for the owner than it is if you do a long-term rental, but there's a whole lot of other costs that go along with it. But if you go from a short-term, if, if I have to go from a short-term to a long-term, town gets zero, right, except for property taxes, but town gets zero in terms of all these other taxes and the benefit of having other folks come into town. Now, I understand, I live in a neighborhood, I understand the issues about turnovers, and, you know, and again, I, I haven't met these neighbors directly, not in this capacity anyway, but I do know Bill and Phyllis Phelps, and so Phyllis is good about saying, hey, uh, you, you had some folks out there that were being a little bit rowdy, and there was a group that was in there earlier, in the summer, they were here for the outage, and there was four or five vehicles, and I told them, you know, you've got to move those vehicles, park someplace else. The only way I can know that is if I, and I drive by there to make sure that they're trying to stay in compliance. So, I don't get to pick who comes into the re, the, the property, but I do get to pick who comes back. And so, there was a group in there that were rowdy that I knew about and that I went and seen myself, and so they're not invited back, right? Uh, the, the group in October I was not aware of, but, but again, I'm, I'm, I mean, I begin, I'm right around the corner from one way or the other, Tap House or down at our real estate office, so I check on the property because I don't want to be the bad neighbor. Uh, we want to make this a good place for folks to come in for a wedding, and we had great reviews on folks who came in for a wedding, provided a good venue for them to get ready, prepare the bridesmaids, all that stuff, and go off to a wedding. There's just not many places you can do that, uh, without having the kind of space that you'd have in a single-family rev, residence. So, you know, there's a lot of benefit to that, and what I want to do is make sure that we provide the best property to folks, but also to the neighborhood, because again, I don't live in Red Point, but we're always so close to it. Um, so, I want to be able to mitigate those kind of issues, but at the end of the day, any renter, I can have a renter in there that gets rowdy just like anybody else would. You could have somebody who's permanently living in the house do the same sorts of things, but the same rules apply, the same laws apply. So, if somebody's out of compliance with our laws, noise or other, other ordinances, then, uh, then any citizen can call the police and say, hey, these people aren't doing what they're supposed to. Um, but as importantly as anything else, and I probably should have done a better job, is to let the neighbors know, hey, if you see something that you're, you're not happy with and you don't feel comfortable calling the police, call me because I will call the police, because I don't want that in my property any more than you want it next to your property. So, that goes to the, uh, the being a good neighbor and the benefit to the town. Now, we've beaten this whole well thing to death, uh, but again, this is a, just, again, there's, uh, the, the house is the same house that it was when I was doing midterm rental, or it's been a long-term rental in, in the past before it was owned by the previous owners. Doesn't change the use of water or anything in any way whatsoever. The house is, is rented right now at about 60% occupancy, so it's actually used less than it would be, uh, if you had permanent residents in there for long-term. So, I'm not using more water, and I even asked Bill and Phyllis Phelps, who own the well that both Red Point and this house are on, to monitor the water so that if, if I was using, or, you know, the tenants or occupants were using more water, then I would pay them more, but they said it's actually not anymore. There, there's no noticeable difference, uh, in the water use. I do pay H R S D, uh, for being on the, you know, being on the well instead of, uh, town water. They charge me more. It's way more. It costs me more, uh, for that property than it does for my own house over in Gatlin Point, because they don't know, so they charge me extra. Uh, so, in terms of that, that's, uh, I'm, I'm paying the bills for that. So, again, the, the house has been there for 78 years. It's been a residence. Uh, yeah, I understand a short-term rental may, uh, cause some concerns. I want to mitigate those concerns, but it really isn't any different than if I had, you know, tenants changing out for a mid or a longer-term rental property. The downside for the town is you wouldn't get the same eyes in Smithfield, and you wouldn't get the same revenue. So, again, to conclude, I'm asking for an approval of the, uh, special use permit and a waiver. I didn't, I wasn't aware of the water issue until after I'd submitted my special use permit, but a waiver to the water issue again as well. Subject to your questions.
Commissioner, questions for the applicant?
Question for Director Clary, if I may. 104 days, is that what I understand? That's the-
104 nights are permitted by right.
Okay, how does the town track that?
I'm sorry?
How does the town, town track the number of days that-
We require the applicant to fill out an affidavit indicating that they will not exceed the 104 nights.
Without asking for a special use-
Without asking for a special use permit.
Which, which I did both, the affidavit and the special use permit.
So, it's pretty much a honor system.
That is correct, sir.
Hmm, okay. Thank you.
Any discussion?
Does the current application have the request for the waiver from the water tap? He just said he was asking for it, but does the current application have the waiver for it?
So, it does not, but it is already connected to the well because they are becoming a commercial structure. Uh, Public Works made the request because of the special use permit to have them connect to the town water.
No question. If they're becoming a commercial structure, why would this not trigger a rezoning as opposed to just a change of use or a special use permit?
So, we classify them as, as commercial because they're operating a full-time special use permit business out of the structure.
Right, so that, but we're in the middle of a residential neighborhood, and now we have essentially a, a, a hotel in a residence.
The way that, the way that we crafted the short-term rental was that they just needed to get a special use permit if they were going to exceed the 104 nights.
So, if it was still rented out to a man, woman, and family for a year, no special use permit and no water change?
And no taxes to the town for-
Okay, and no taxes.
Any further discussion?
The two speakers that were here, I understand their concern. Um, by right, we, anybody can do this for 104 nights. The 104 nights is two weekend nights a year, 52 weeks a year. That, that's how we came up with that number. Exceeding, and that's, that's still for, for you guys can be difficult because theoretically, you could have 104 different people living in this home a year, uh, but we, we've already allowed that. I, I have a tough time getting behind allowing S U P for, for essentially 365 nights a year. Um, I think it changes the use of a short-term rental and, and the, the, the purpose behind that, you know, when, when you think of an Airbnb, at least the way it was built and the way it is in my head, it's like, okay, I have a house, and I live there sometimes, and when I'm not there, I have a way to rent it out for others, and that's kind of the theory that was behind it. I was kind of pitching, at least in my brain, uh, and we, we wrote an ordinance that allowed for that and allowed us to adapt that. And a lot of other cities, and, and, Ms. Clary, actually, you can speak to this, I mean, Virginia Beach fights this all the time.
All the time.
And it, and, and there, at the point they're like, well, we're just not going to do any of it, and, and it's very difficult. So, we tried to get ahead of the curve and craft an ordinance that allowed for us to, uh, handle it and handle it responsibly. And one of the things I've always done when I've, since I've been on the commission is to say, well, let's at least allow for an S U P so we can at least hear the case and see if it makes sense. Now, that way, we're just not, there, there's no other way to, to, to move about it, and, but in this particular case, I'm trying, I know it's not the issue when you're here, I just, it, it doesn't make sense to do. I mean, we are in a neighborhood. There are, you know, families around, around them, and, and I understand where they're coming from about not wanting somebody there every, potentially every night of the year. So, I, I think that's kind of where I stand on this. I, I, I have a tough time getting behind this. There is an op, opportunity there to stay at 104, um, and, and, you know. I'll just hush on that. I've said everything I have to say.
Anything else? Chair will entertain a motion if you're ready.
Madam Chair, uh, I'll make the motion that we deny the application for the S U P.
An unfavorable recommendation to council.
An unfavorable recommendation to town council for this special use permit.
Is there a second?
There is a second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
No.
So, to four to two, we are sending an unfavorable recommendation to town council on this S U P. Thank you.
Great. We need to drop the hammer?
No. Okay, all right, I understand. Next item is Town Bank Site Plan Amendment, Entrance Quarter and, oh, Entrance Quarter Overlay and Site Plan Amendment, 1119 South Church Street. Ms. Clary, do we have staff report?
Yes, thank you. The applicant is seeking entrance quarter overlay review and a site plan amendment for the installation of curb and gutter, gutter around the perimeter of the existing parking lot along with pavement repairs. Town staff recommend that approval is contingent on the applicant obtaining a zoning permit and fee payment. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of this application? Come up and state your name and address for the record, please.
Uh, good evening, all. My name is Evan Wagon. I am with M S A, uh, the civil engineering design firm who did these site plans and associate calculations. We are located at 5032 Rouse Drive in Virginia Beach, uh, Virginia. I don't have much additional to say about the site plans. Uh, they've been approved for stormwater management in the N S, Roswell Center, Pinto, excuse me. Um, they're fairly straightforward plans. I'm more than happy to go over them if, if needed, but I'm mostly here just to answer any questions from the planning commission.
Okay. Anyone have any questions for this gentleman?
Just one. The calculations for stormwater runoff, the water is going to come off that, that, uh, that surface, and it's going to go into the drains that's along the road?
Not directly.
I, I saw there's one in the front, uh, next to the sign, near the sign. There's one drain there in the parking lot, but I didn't notice any other drains in the parking lot.
Can I ask a question first? Is there a permeable strip in front of this curb that is collecting that runoff? That's what I was trying to interpret. So, it looks like you got the pavement, then a permeable strip, and then the permanent curbing. Is that how this is assembled?
That is essentially the intent.
Yes. So, that stormwater you're worried about should be going to the edge of the curb through the permeable stone aggregate and into the ground, not all just running off into the street and whatever else. So, you're not curbing the whole thing and forcing the runoff off the property. It's still going to go into the edges of this facility like it does today?
Well, that was, that's using that, uh, it's some sort of stone filtering?
That's correct.
Yeah. I, I had never seen that before. How often is that done?
It's, uh, typically a pre-treatment device used on larger-scale, uh, stormwater facilities, but it makes sense in this application because they're, they're intended to be used along the edge of parking lots to de-channelize and spread out concentrated runoff and to provide-
So, how, how is the stone, in front of the drain, how is the stone retained? I mean, what keeps it in place?
The stone is down in a, um, it's a, it's a dugout, uh, area that the stone is down in underneath, and it, over, over time, as it does, it does move, you know, when water, water runs through it, there is a maintenance requirement.
Okay.
That's outlined in the site plans as well.
So, essentially, you're treating stormwater on-site?
Yes. The project actually reduces the overall impervious cover, which we've used to-
Yeah.
Yes.
Any other questions? Anything else, ladies and gentlemen? Chair will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I move we present, uh, we move to accept as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the ayes have it. Thank you. Our final item is a discussion item on a text amendment. Ms. Clary, do you have staff report?
Yes, thank you. The applicant is seeking a text amendment to the downtown neighborhood residential zoning district in order to apply for a revised site plan for the project on the corner of Washington and James Street. This text amendment would include a waiver of maximum density as an additional special use permit item. This would allow the applicant to apply for a new site plan, which would feature four detached single-family condo dwellings and three attached duplex condo dwellings. It would also feature sidewalks, making it easily walkable around the surrounding destinations, including downtown YMCA and the library. The applicant would still need to apply for a special use permit for duplex dwellings, zero lot line development, and a waiver of parking and loading. The current density for the D N R district is five units per net developable acre. Town staff recommends a robust discussion and consensus on guidance for the applicant. Thank you.
So, I'm sensing we have a presentation. Excellent. Come on up, gentlemen.
Good evening. My name is Vincent Corallo, 22 Main Street here in Smithfield. I'm also the principal for J B C Holdings, in which this company has purch, uh, has purchased the property- I'm also the principal for JBC Holdings in which this company has purch, uh, has purchased the property from Mr. Luder some time ago now. Let me say thank you very much to Ms. Tammy Clary and staff, uh, certainly to getting to this point. I understand it's an open discussion. And, uh, I don't know how robust it's gonna get versus earlier, but, you know, we're here to answer some questions and, uh, we will certainly answer them the best way we can. I have the pleasure of working with Mr. John Hopkey here from Williamsburg Architects. And, uh, he and I sat earlier on, uh, a while back and took a look at this property and said, uh, you know, John, this thing is already got a site plan approved and if we were to redesign it. And, uh, he kind of picked on me a little bit and we come up with some ideas and, uh, went back to Ms. Clary and I think there were some mechanisms that may be involved to get us hopefully to a starting line, uh, in the future, uh, with this particular James Street, uh, residential development. More than anything, I, I think if I was to give a little bit of insight on this property, uh, first of all, we're very fortunate to purchase it, um, from the seller, Mr. Luder. Uh, he was more than generous, gave me ample time, due some due diligence and, uh, come up with an idea that in redesigning this, we looked at the, the, the pluses. And the property is just a magnificent plus because it sits in the middle of Smithfield and the amenities are there. I know tonight was mentioned YMCA, the library, and, and, and all pedestrian-friendly type events that, uh, Smithfield's all about. And I think that's important to know, uh, because it does create neighborhoods and, uh, families and friends. And I think between John and myself, we put together a product that complements that and certainly cements the neighborhood immediately around it, but certainly within Smithfield. I don't think we've contradicted anything. And we're trying to put our best foot forward to, to start. I know we're gonna be asking for some, uh, text amendments and edits and special use permits. But we do that with all the genuineness we have with this, with this property and certainly my experiences and businesses being here in Smithfield. We look to go forward. In saying that, I know it's been a long night thus far, so I'll keep it short on this, but, uh, I'd certainly love to answer any questions and, and John will up to that as well. So thank you for your time and, uh, I'm right here if it's needed.
Thank you. The PowerPoint presentation is also the second PDF, uh, on your, on your computers if you'd like to follow along as well.
Okay. Uh, and I, I'm, again, I'm John Hopkey, uh, Hopkey Harrison Architects, uh, on, uh, at eleven fifty-six Jamestown Road in Williamsburg. Hopefully I'm gonna hit the right button here. Awesome. Okay, so basically what we, uh, what we seek is a text amendment for an additional specu, special use permit condition to the DNR zoning ordinance to allow for a planned residential development with higher density than what the ordinance, the body of the ordinance says. But compatible density to, to this neighborhood. And this is your, this is an excerpt from the zoning ordinance right now and that's your list of, uh, SUPs. And so we're, we're looking for, uh, one more for, uh, uh, an increase in the, in the density. The site, you prob, hopefully you can figure out where you are on this. We've labeled, um, this is how the pointer, maybe, is it? Which one is it?
Should be the top one.
Is it? That red one. Okay. Uh, this is Washington, this is James Street, and this is Clay Street, which has just been more recently, uh, completed. And, uh, and this is the adjacent neighborhood. And the, the parcels that we're talking about are those two. But the previous plan that's, that's approved was really covered this whole, this whole area. And what's kind of interesting is that, you know, I went in and I looked on the, the property information site and the layout of these lots and so forth. And the, the lots through here, I, uh, Cherry picked a few of them and they're on the order of a tenth of an acre. So the, the existing density that, that you could build straight on these lots would get you, you know, more like ten units an acre. And so this is, uh, the, the approved plan. I've, I've highlighted the property lines and so forth. And it, it offers us a couple of challenges. I think what was, uh, what was already, uh, done, the plan there is good, but, uh, we think we can, uh, make this a little bit, a little bit better. What it was showing was, uh, two units on these two lots and six units on these lots. And you can kind of see the property lines through here, do some jig jogging and these, these houses are attached and they're pretty big houses, uh, for the neighborhood. And, uh, what we feel like we can do is get two more houses or dwellings, uh, on these properties and be more in keeping with what is already in place here. And so overlaying our, uh, concept plan that we have right now, uh, you can kind of see how these footprints are more in scale with what is here already. And I forgot to mention going back, the, the property is also constrained by, uh, these two trees, which is, it's not really good to call them a constraint because they're quite an asset. They're beautiful trees. And, uh, but they, there's a, there was a condition on the previous plan that these be protected within easement. And that also introduces kind of a practical problem when you think about, uh, how you're gonna, in terms of real estate, how to, uh, how to sell the, uh, properties. In that who, who owns these trees? They're gonna wind up on, each one is gonna wind up on a separate lot and those owners are now gonna be responsible for them. That's gonna make those lots more difficult to sell or, uh, so we, we had a thought. If, if we came up with a, a concept where we could get a little more density, uh, and sell it as a condominium project, uh, then we would have, uh, small lots that people own, but common property that everyone would own. And that entity can take care of the, uh, the common elements such as the sidewalks and the, and what we do is, you'll see in a moment in our concept, we want to make this, uh, like a little park around these trees to protect them. And then everything is, is kind of tied together with, uh, fencing and sidewalks around the perimeter, but also through these, these elements. One other benefit of the layout that we're, we're showing here is that we're doing an internal alley or shared driveway here. So it's, it's made so that it's not a convenient cut-through, but the residents here can, can use these and then their units face, face the street or face out onto a sidewalk or into this park. And what that does is it enables us to have a lot more on-street parking because each house doesn't have a curb cut. You just have the two. And so this is kind of a diagram showing how the, the lots might lay out and, uh, kind of a calculation of the density. And it's, uh, it's, you know, when you sit down and start putting this spreadsheet together, it makes your eyes a little bit blurry. But basically the, the approved site plan, uh, these, the eight lots that they had before add up to fifty-two thousand square feet roughly. And, uh, uh, and that was two point seven units, uh, I'm sorry. That was two point nine eight or three, three units an acre based on the, the whole site, less Clay Street. But the, um, uh, if you compare it, i- if you calculate the density against just these two parcels, then it's, it was six point seven one per acre. So what we're proposing is to get two more units on and it pushes it up to eight point three units per acre. And again, just, just neighboring over here, it's, it's, you know, close to the, or maybe even exceeds ten units an acre. So the, the thought is, uh, uh, these are conceptual elevations, but the thought here is going around the neighborhood. The, the houses that are there now are fairly simple, but they, they have some really charming features, uh, a lot of front porches, simple gables, a lot of times they return the, uh, the roof line to create a pediment. And, uh, on several occasions, they return the roof line just a little bit to create this, this formal, uh, corner element that, uh, I guess you would, uh, you might call it, um, uh, Greek revival. And, and it also, there, you see a lot of little, uh, I'm sorry, muted colors. And it's a really nice palette of colors that, that is already in the neighborhood. And so our thought was to pick up on some of these features, not, not replicate them, but, but do something that's very compatible with what's already there. So it, so our development will be friendly to the neighborhood. And from, as an aerial view, it would be, um, something like this. And, uh, and again, the, the duplex units, uh, what we were, uh, rather than doing them as a mirror image unit, we were looking at having them, two different units that come together. So it, it's, uh, it's somewhat ambiguous as to where one starts and the other stops. So it looks like multiple units and it breaks up the scale of it to, again, to be more in keeping with the scale of all the other houses in the neighborhood. So, uh, hopefully this'll work. Oh, okay. Sometimes it's easier to understand these designs if you go ahead and see them in 3D or 4D, yeah, you know, moving through them. So that's the, we just passed the park and then this is the internal shared driveway that goes between the units. And now we're, we're going down Clay Street and gonna back up a little bit and go up in the air. So you can see off to the left is, are those, that pair of units. And everything is tied together with a picket fence, so it's, it all reads together. And everybody that lives in this neighborhood will know that they belong to that sub-neighborhood of the overall neighborhood. And they share a homeowners association and they share this park. And they share these, you know, internal spaces, uh, sidewalks, um, and so forth, inside the, the perimeter fence. And do remember, this is, you know, conceptual. We have a, uh, you know, a good bit of refinement to do and, uh, Vinnie has some market research to do, so we can figure out exactly, uh, what the market wants to see. First floor bedrooms or not, and how many bedrooms total and that kind of thing. Going back where we started?
Yes.
Do I need to? There you go. So, uh, you know, to kind of summarize why, why do this? In, in part because we get a more compatible scale and density to the neighborhood that's already there. And, you know, if you, Vinnie hasn't gotten as far as, you know, calculating out the, the cost of these things, so it's premature to talk about price points. But, I mean, you can kind of realize that if you're putting ten units where the previous developer was planning on eight units, that you can do as well, but achieve a lower price point. And the, what's proposed here is a, a more walkable community. And it's a better concept for pre, tree preservation, sorry. Because those become shared, uh, responsibilities for everybody in the homeowners association. And finally, uh, you know, doing this as a condominium with shared common property, you get more logical boundaries. When you, when you come out of your front door, you know what belongs to you because it's what's right in front of you and right behind you. And then you know what's also shared, uh, because it's defined, you know, by the, the picket fence. And that's, um, that's pretty much our presentation. Interested in answering questions and, uh, hopefully not too robust.
Great, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Nice presentation. Ladies and gentlemen, the floor is open for questions and discussion.
Couple, couple comments, Madam Chair. We're not really voting on the project at all tonight because that has nothing to do with, with our discussion tonight. What Mr. Corallo is asking is for the ability to apply for this product. So what he's asking for is an, an additional, uh, use that will be permitted by special use, which you would have to come back and apply for. And we have done this in other occasions. Mr. Brown, I believe this is one of your favorite things to do is to change our special use permit. But we have done this in other occasion. It seems, uh, it seems reasonable to me that, that we, that we do make an amendment to our text, uh, that would allow them to, to waiver of, of density. And if we do that, they come back and apply for it, we can discuss the merits of the proposal, uh, at that time. Not we, oh. You guys.
Was that in the form of a motion?
Well, no, it was discussion first because I'm, I'm, uh, I'm, I'm sure there's others that, I'd be happy to make it as a form of a motion, but I believe we're ready, ready for a motion yet.
Because it's just a discussion, right? Or is there, there's no vote because does there need to be a public hearing?
That is correct. Uh, the applicant just wants to know if the planning commission is interested in them pursuing this text amendment in order to include a waiver of maximum density.
Right, so I would look at the audience and go, hey, you know, we're looking at waiving the maximum density. I wonder what our new council would think about waiving density in the stuff right around town, but, uh.
But this would give them an opportunity, it would give everybody an opportunity to weigh in on, on any project that, that meets this. Right now, you cannot exceed it. Right? There, there's no way around it. That's, that's one of the things I like about special use permits because you can always say, well, but if we did X, then, then Y.
Well, if I may, Chair.
Yes, sir.
The previous, uh, application put is, we approved, correct? And we had to waive some density for that project to go forward, did we? Did we not?
They got a, a special use permit for zero lot line dwellings and duplex units.
Uh, the previous application, the?
Yes.
The Luda Acres?
Correct.
But it increased the density beyond the downtown neighborhood residential?
No, it did not.
It did not?
It's just the lot line issue.
It's the lot line issue.
Okay. All right, something's not clear to me. The previous application, I, if I understand, the downtown residential allows five units per acre?
Correct.
Okay. And the previous application did not exceed that five units?
That is correct because it included the VFW and, uh, the children's center. It was all one lot. So they were actually dealing with two point six eight eight acres. Once they, uh, installed the Clay Street, now we have these two isolated parcels, which are the larger parcel that's on the corner and then the two lots that are behind the children's center. And that decreased the available acreage to one point two.
Because the street didn't come all the way through in the beginning.
Yeah, but this, but how many units was approved in the previous application?
Eight units.
Eight units was approved for that one. But wh- when you say eight units now, what about the footprint? Was, was it? Eight footprints?
I think he's got the numbers on there with like fifty-two thousand square feet total coverage and now you got about fifty-two thousand square feet total coverage.
Square footage is gonna be the same. The units are gonna be small.
Would you like me to go back to that table?
Yeah, pull it back up, that's fine. There you go.
So, if, if I can try to muddy the waters, uh, the, uh, so the approved plan, the previous applicant, when they're figuring their density, they had a larger denominator in their fraction because they were, they're, uh, able to count all of the property. And, uh, now, what we're coming in with is just ownership of the, those two parcels. So, theirs added up to 2.67, is that what?
Yeah.
And, and the two parcels that we're talking about only add up to 1.2, but their, their, uh, eight units are sitting on the same parcels as ours. So, there, you could think of it as their density on our parcels was 6.7, and our density on our parcels is 8.4.
Yeah, because it was one parcel and now it's four.
Clear as mud, right? What is your density on their land? 3.73.
Oh.
So, whether Mr. Corolla had bought this property to begin with, he would have been dealing with the denominator of 2.68.
Right.
So, to me, that, he's had to, I'm assuming if you had bought this, the town would have still asked you to, to punch through Clay Street for them. And so, for me, I think we need to go back to the 2.68 number when we're considering this property, not a 1.2 number as far as density is concerned.
That is correct. At that original number, once we take out 20% for the proposed Clay Street extension, his density would have been 4.6.
Yeah. Okay. So, my point is, is these, these improvements would have had to have been done. He's assumed those improvements, I'm, I'm sure he's paid for them over, because I'm sure he paid for them.
Yeah.
And, and that, and I think we, to be fair, I think we should use the total acreage of the original lot when considering this, because it would have had to have been done. Unfortunately, he's coming in on the backside after the road is there and he's using that.
Right, it's like putting back together the parent parcel.
But I think to be fair in this development, he should be, he should be granted the 2.7 number, in my opinion, to lower his density, which in my mind, to do a text amendment is reasonable considering these houses are on a scale of what's in the community. And I had the pleasure of seeing somebody in that community today who was very favorable about looking at this and thought it was very nice, and she didn't have any objections to it whatsoever, and she lives down the street from this.
I also have, um, encountered some friends in the neighborhood that, um, like this project, think it is an improvement over what was previously approved, and so I think community support is there for it. Um, I know Mr. Corolla does high-quality products, um, you've seen some of his work before. So, I think we should at, at least entertain the text amendment and, um, give him the opportunity to apply for the project.
I agree.
I agree.
And part of the project is, I mean, concern a lot of, a few of the neighbors was the trees remain. And in your presentation, I see you're building a wall that's actually part of a plan to build a wall around these trees to protect them?
Yeah, it's more conceptual. It's, uh, it's an idea really to, to do some sort of seating around it so that you keep the kids away from the roots and so forth.
Okay.
But, well, before we get way deep into it, we'll probably get with an arborist and ask what's the best strategy for...
Yeah, I'm not sure, you know, break box around a tree is great for the roots either.
Right, I think, if I may, and this was a request from Mr. Luter, uh, to me, and language in the easement, and he had asked me, Vinnie, are you, are you gonna mess with the trees? I said, "No, we're, we're gonna keep the trees." And, uh, he told me about when he was in high school, I guess that was the meeting branch or something, so, but, no, my word is solid. Uh, I hope all y'all know that, but, uh, we had no intentions of messing with them. Matter of fact, we gotta go in there and limb them up because they're a little bit, uh, got some issues from those power lines. We'll, we'll certainly present a landscaping plan, hardscape, but, yeah, you gotta discipline that a little bit because we really feel that James Street is gonna be such an exposure to this site, and, uh, we really feel a little set off, and, and we got two great assets there with two mature trees, uh, that tell the time of history with the people that went to the high school there, so, no, we're not messing with the trees.
Bill, can we ask the opinion of the, the new, can we ask the opinion of the new people that are going on council?
Sure you can, I don't know if they'll give it to you or not, but you can ask.
Well, you know, that's one of the things that they, they ran on was density, you know?
But, but if they have, I mean, they ultimately make the decision, it's up, it's up to you if you want to go through with a text amendment.
Sure.
It can come up for a public hearing, and you can give them their, your opinion, and they can say, "Yeah, we think that's great," or, "No, we don't."
Yeah.
But, I mean, that's, you have two people here, but there's, there's seven, so...
Correct, yeah, yeah. And Bill's already won. Would anyone out there like to speak? That's not my position to ask that, but... Is there anyone in the gallery that would like to be part of this discussion? Thank you.
You can, sure you can, it's a discussion, like, it's, yeah, sure you can.
I opened the floor to you.
But you don't have to, I mean, it's, it's entirely, if you have an opinion...
I have my personal opinion.
Yeah.
Since I can't speak to anybody else.
Sure.
I can, I don't...
Can you come to the mic so it picks up the... We can, we can sash.
I'm not gonna say five minutes.
That's the only reason I ran, I wanna be that guy. Hi, I'm Bill Harris, it's, uh, what house am I in? 329 Gray Street, beautiful downtown, and just as a citizen, uh, I would suggest to you folks that, uh, amending the, uh, changing the wording in the zoning thing is perfectly fine. It is part of the process, it would allow everybody at this level to participate, and we push it to the next level, so everybody there can participate also. It doesn't guarantee, uh, the approval or even the submission of SUPs, but to give those people the opportunity to exercise that seems fine with me.
Thank you, Mr. Harris.
And the text amendment, the text amendment, it doesn't change the overall ordinance, zoning ordinance, it just applies to this particular parcel, correct?
No.
No, it's a text amendment.
It would apply to, any property in that zoning district could ask for a special use permit to exceed the density. It's a change in the law, it's not just applicable to this property, it's applicable to any property that is subject to this zoning district. But it's, once again, it's a special use permit, and you don't have to grant it, or you can grant it with conditions.
Right.
Okay.
Gives them the opportunity to come forward with a proposal that we can look at and agree to or not.
So, just to be, it's not by right?
No.
Thank you, that's what I, that's what I want to get, I want to be clear about that.
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Gives them the right to bring it to us.
Yes. Yes, understood.
Anything else, ladies and, ladies and gentlemen? Okay, very healthy. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you so very much for your time. Randy, take care. Thank you for everything.
Thank you. Dave, you're the squirrel. So, just to summarize, uh, the consensus of planning commission is, is that they would entertain the text amendment application for a waiver of, of maximum density in the DNR.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, we don't have any minutes to approve?
No minutes, definitely.
Okay.
I think last month was voluminous, so...
27 pages. 27 pages, I know you'll read those thoroughly when you get them. Then, ladies and gentlemen, we are...
Can I?
Not adjourned, just kidding.
Can I, can I ask, only because it spurred on the question, if the church, if, if Church Street gets, Church Street itself gets the bike path and expand it and all the things that may have to go into it, I don't know where that water main is, but if that water main will stay in the middle of the road, do you think they'll move it? If they move it and you have to touch the water main, would you, would the town then in the engineering require two-inch stub outs for everything along that way if you're in the process of doing it? So, all those businesses along the way, along Church Street ultimately would have two-inch stub outs if the water main has to be touched? I don't know if the water main's dead center of the street, you widen it to three lanes or whatever the plans may be, does the water main get touched? If the water main gets touched, do you automatically get two-inch stub outs?
Water...
Because you're doing it already.
The water, this, the problem here is the water main's on the outside of the street.
No, no, I get that, I'm just asking for future, so let's say we magically get the money for the bike path, and everybody says, "We're gonna do the bike path down Church Street, cut it across," and you're gonna expand that road from the Cypress Creek bench to Battery Park. Wherever that water main is, if it has to be dug up, moved, changed, altered, would it not automatically then have two-inch stub outs all the way around for all the businesses along the way because it has to be changed or altered?
So, if we're replacing a water main, then yes, we do include those stub outs. I would have to verify to see if we were replacing it, if the stub out would just be that one-inch connection, uh, because at that point in time, it is just a residential, it is not a commercial structure.
You mean even on Church Street, but like Supreme Gas Station, would that need to be a two-inch stub out?
Yes.
Or the vape shop, a two-inch stub out, Q Daddy's two inches?
That is correct. That is correct.
Okay.
Okay, anything else?
Oh, that was an interesting question. Now, I got another question.
Okay, Mr. Brown, please.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. But, 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 he, he, you mentioned, you, you mentioned, uh, Supreme, uh, the vape shop, Q Daddy's, do they all currently have two inches?
I do not know, I'd have to check.
Oh, interesting.
Hmm, okay.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we are adjourned, thank you for your time. You got that in there.